This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, this is, it's 6:02 Tuesday, November 21st, calling to order the planning board meeting, and we do not have a quorum this evening, so that we're going to postpone and move all these agenda items to the December meeting. One item I did want to bring up on the December meeting, I didn't get a response from everybody, but it's scheduled for the 19th, and we could alternatively do it on the 12th, and I'm fine either way, but...
Probably the 12th will work out better since Christmas, what, the 25th?
Yes.
Not a bad time of the year for me.
Okay, so you...
It don't really, I'm flexible about the 12th.
And I...
Hello, hello?
Olive.
Olive, yes.
Well...
You knew how hard it was for me to get here tonight.
Well, we're gonna have to take that back, we didn't have a quorum, we just, we're gonna shut the meeting down and postpone it till... So...
So I think we're going to have a meeting, so please turn on your mics.
Yep.
Yep, sorry about that.
Okay, well, good. We'll go ahead and, I want to amend the agenda to add, I'll give you each a copy right up. I want to add this item. This has to do with the Affordable Housing Act that we talked there, and this is a draft that I put together to send to town manager, and I didn't send it out by email, and we'll take time here in the meeting to go ahead and look at that thing and see if we've got support to move it forward.
So we'll need a motion to amend.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the, the agenda for tonight.
Yep, motion.
Second? I'll second it. No, I can't second my own motion.
I'm still reading.
No, it's not unless we're amending the agenda just to add that, and it...
I'm saying...
Okay, all in favor? Okay, there we go, and that, we'll put that at the end of what we have to discuss tonight.
So shall we start over then with the call to order and so forth?
No, well, I just explained what...
Yeah, we have approval of the minutes.
Well, there's a typo I wanted to point out to you.
Okay, yeah, well, exactly, yes.
Yeah, yeah. If you'll pass that down.
Sure.
You have a copy of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Approval of the minutes. Everybody get to read their minutes?
Yes.
Okay, and you want to comment on the change?
Yeah, the spelling of my name, I wasn't...
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, the whole...
I apologize.
Yes, that's okay.
Who's whole?
It's a new... Okay, at least that was the only...
Oh!
That was the only typo.
Well, there was one other thing, but it will come up here at the meeting. Thank you, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes for October 24, 2023?
As corrected.
As corrected, as amended.
I wasn't here, so I shouldn't vote.
Well, you have Ted right there, he's, and I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Public comment, anything here tonight that you wanted to speak to? Okay, all right. Item four, discussion of the mailbox vehicular collision incidents. We got the report that was sent to you from the police department, and it looks like sometimes it's an issue and sometimes it's not. So, any comment on that?
Yes, sir. I appreciate the fact that the police had few incidents reported. However, anybody who drives Manatee Street can see that there are many mailboxes that haven't been knocked all the way down, but have been knocked, and it would have been much the worse for the people in the vehicles had those been...
Concrete.
Concrete structures. So I, I think it's worth discussing that we ask for an amendment to not allow any in the future. I'm not proposing we go after those that are in place, but perhaps it's not such a good idea when the post office itself asks people not to do that, that we allow it.
That's all, that's all, that's all correct. Didn't the motion which failed in the last meeting, a two-to-two tie, and two-to, a tie does not advance the motion. I believe it was that it was for just the mailboxes from this point forward.
I see.
Correct.
I see.
That's what it was, and we, here's my dilemma, I was supportive of that and still am supportive of that, but we had a two-two stalemate that didn't pass the motion last time, and I think if, and those two that were in favor of it are not here tonight. Okay, so what, I would like the motion to go to the floor once more, but I wouldn't like to go and report back to the Board of Commissioners because the two people out there that now it passed, I would like to wait till we have a full board and bring that motion up again.
Makes sense.
Does that, does that make sense? So we're not...
Yes, sir.
Being whimsical.
Just more of a thought for everyone. I know we had been kicking around also the kind of the right-of-way sprinklers and the things that are in there, and I kind of thought this over a bit, and I said to myself, I said, you know, this mailbox, the sprinkler, or anything else for that matter, right? There are even some places around town where I've seen like rocks...
Yes.
That don't really have any kind of meaning to them, and I say to myself, I was like, okay, if somebody was to kind of just spill over and hit that, that could tear up your car, that could create a worse situation, right? So along these lines, is it better to just kind of look at it from a more holistic standpoint and say, hey, are we looking at the right-of-way period? And are we looking at that and saying, instead of just like honing in on like a mailbox or on a sprinkler? All these things are on the right-of-way anyway.
Generally speaking, and Ted, you're a builder, I'm gonna just kind of point to you, I mean, the zoning permits we issue do not allow people to put things in right-of-way.
And that's what I'm going, right?
What they've done afterwards, we, it's an enforcement action, it's not a zoning ordinance.
Right, right.
The problem with the sprinkler system, if the utilities come in there, they're gonna cut it.
Yeah.
Yes.
If they got rocks there, they can move.
Sure.
But that's buried in the ground on a permanent basis, and that's just gonna cause a violation.
Well, may I...
Yes.
Address this? I was gonna bring it up at the very end with Commissioners other thing. Well, the fact that, that this item has been taken care of with the inclusion of the condition on residential zoning permits, that sprinkler systems not be installed, I respectfully disagree, because there are sprinklers that are six inches from the pavement right now. Now, what I have proposed is, I mean, to myself, and I, I do this sometimes, is I'll call the West Carteret Water Corp. It is not legal to have a sprinkler system unless you have an RPC, a reduction pressure zone, unless you're on a private well. So, we can, we can peach on the irrigation systems and have West Carteret weigh in.
Yeah.
So, I mean, really, and we should, because if somebody runs over a sprinkler head, because it's in the right-of-way, and they dodge a dog or a pedestrian, which is more often, and run over a sprinkler head, then contaminants can get into our water system. That's the reason for the RPC. If you have a swimming pool irrigation, or you don't have a gap in your, your swimming pool water supply, an air gap, you have an RPC. It's, it's the rule with West Carteret Water Corp.
Well, the only comment I'd make, I think the right-of-way is reserved for the town and public utilities. I don't get too excited if somebody has a little bush going out there or something like that, but rocks, hard stuff, and anything like that, other than the mailbox, and this came up, because the only thing in the ordinance that is permitted is a mailbox.
Yeah.
So, I, I think it's, I think the ordinance, and we're gonna, we're gonna address this mailbox thing here when we have the rest of the people here.
Right, right.
So, I, I just think it's, it's an enforcement issue, you know, that...
Well, we can help ourselves with notifying West Carteret Water, hey, there's a sprinkler system here, have you determined that the people are on a private well? If not, they need an RPC, and you're the people, West Carteret, to make that happen, and they sure will.
You know, I don't know why anybody had put a sprinkler system on this water system. I had put that all sod over my, and I had to water it, and my water bill this month, I'm trying to get that sod to stick, was almost $250.
Wow, and this is a nonprofit member-owned...
Right.
Water system.
Okay, so we're gonna move the, well, let me ask this question, I'm getting out of order here, but I had sent out an email, I didn't hear from everybody, I'm moving from the December meeting from the 19th to the 12th.
For next month.
For the next one.
It's fine.
You're fine with it?
Yes, sir.
Well, that makes, with him and me, that's four of us for the 12th. Let's...
I believe, I believe Neil and Laura also indicated that they're good, so...
Good.
Should be fine.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna move the meeting, we'll get this item out right now, because I didn't want to move it to the 19, a meeting that we didn't have six people, this vehicular, this mailbox item. So, what I'm saying is, with this, we'll move the meeting to the 12th of December, and we'll schedule the mailbox issue for that meeting. Okay? All right. Let's see. Okay, the next item, amending the Code of Ordinances on street number and regulate, street numbering regulations, and there was, in our handout, there was a rewording of what was originally a paragraph F in the old Code of Ordinances, it's now paragraph, let's see, 1611C in the U, in the Unified Development Ordinance. And that's what I presumed you meant it for.
The UDO, we moved certain paragraphs from the UDO to the Code of Ordinances, and what we're talking about is what we moved to the Code of Ordinances, paragraph F, rewording it.
Rewording it?
Yes.
Okay, but what remains in the UDO is the old, so you're saying that's being struck, struck?
Correct, that was struck by the Board of Commissioners at their meeting.
Okay, does everybody understand that now?
Yes, I do.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you all recommended to them to strike paragraphs from the UDO and put them into the Code of Ordinances, and you're recommending that we change the wording of one of those paragraphs that you all...
Paragraph F, yes.
Yes, yes.
Now, now that I question, was paragraph F adequate for everybody?
It seems clear enough to me. I think it accomplishes the intent.
That's what I felt.
Yep.
You know, you could either totally delete F, but you know, this, I think it's actually better written with it modified the way it is, because you bring up the, that, the mailboxes themselves, and what happened is when they didn't do this, when we got the, those numbers, the 91, 911 numbers, people were sticking them everywhere, and if your house is not in the same stride of the street as the mailbox, it's useless, so. Okay.
Do you want to have a motion?
Yes.
I saw Ted still reading.
Okay, yeah.
You good, or?
Yep. So, so the motion would be to paragraph F as modified, be moved to the Code of Ordinances and removed from the Unified...
It's not in the UDO, you just want to modify paragraph F with these changes.
Yeah, but that old one's still in the UDO.
The UDO, those paragraphs, you have a paper copy, yep, remember what I was telling you, Heather?
Oh, okay, she already deleted it.
Yes, and this is a dated paper copy.
Okay.
Right, this is the, this is like version two, and then they just updated like version three.
Okay, okay, I didn't know that, all right. You did tell me that the other day, but I didn't realize she took it out of there, so...
Oh, once the board votes, it's gone, it's immediate, it is, you know, they made a decision, they voted. The ordinances are changed effectively on that date...
Okay.
At that time.
Okay, so the only motion you need is to move, put the amended paragraph F in the Code of Ordinances.
Just to accept this language.
As a doctor, right, just a doctor, right?
Yeah, that's the motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. Want to give, next item is this, this letter to Senator Sanderson and Representative Cairns. I want to take about five minutes for you to give you a chance to read that. I think I should go right in here and delete that, right, delete it.
Yes, absolutely, yes, and it's hard to keep current.
Do we have an extra copy for the public?
I do.
Here, hold your mic.
Thank you.
How about the agenda, brought a copy with me?
She, Paxton, how do you manage it? Yeah, there, it had been on the...
Thank you, Julie. I think the timing of this is pretty interesting.
I'll talk about it, okay.
Well, there's at least one mistaken is.
Yeah, I saw it after I copied them. It's just a preliminary draft, though. Okay, what I did is, I couldn't think of how to get a discussion going, so I drafted the letter as if I were gonna write it, but it would go to our town manager to edit and change as he saw fit to bring before the Board of Commissioners, but essentially those are the points that I made. So I'll open it to comments. You want to go first, Alex?
I'll, I'll hold off.
I'll hold off.
Pardon? I'll hold off for now, I'm still thinking about a few things, if that's all right, so you can come back.
Paxton?
Two of our three zones in Cape Carteret, the yellow zone and the blue zone, are 20,000 square foot lot minimums.
Yes.
So, you can't say residential lots in Cape Carteret are all less than 20,000 square feet, you can't say that.
Okay, just...
I mean, I mean, that's a considerable sized lot.
Well, I understand that, I...
You could say some, some lots, but it's...
They range from 20,000 square feet and down.
Yes.
Yes.
But, but, you know, that is, it's just not so. Residential lots in Cape Carteret are all less than 20,000 square feet.
That's tight, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. Are 25,000 square feet...
The majority, the majority of lots...
Okay.
Are over, are 20,000 square feet.
I'll fix that.
Okay.
I got it.
All right, thank you. Aside from that, I have appreciated our enforcement officers' update on many things, and one of them was this League of Municipalities bulletin, so they're already on it, and I'm not so sure... I'm in favor of our Commissioners sending a letter to the legislature, but that's just me. I have, it sounds like they're on it, the League of Municipalities.
Yeah, yeah, well, I put in there, I felt like, you know, I can't disagree with affordable housing, okay, I don't, but you're talking a community like this with no public sewer, no residential public sewer, and being in an environmentally sensitive area with all these tributaries coming into here, that's where my issue is.
Well, I can't tell you how much I regret not being here for the presentation by the Health Department last month.
Well, right.
If I hadn't had to go out of town, I would have certainly been here, but they will be, not so much the zoning, they will be a big player, yes, sir.
That's why I say it, if they meet the criteria, they got all rights to have a mother-in-law suite.
Right.
Yeah.
Or a garage apartment, if they meet the criteria.
If they, exactly.
And the first step would be environmental.
Yes, sir.
Well...
If they can't do that, they can't do nothing.
Well, that's right.
Right.
I think it's pretty real, making care of it.
But the issue I have, even when you take, they've got all kinds of systems that the Health Department permits these days.
Yes, yes.
But the end result, the effluent that goes through into the drain field drains to the groundwater, okay? And you can't change that as good a system as you put in, you know, and you can look out of some of these systems, and the water coming out of that is like clear, you know, you could, it's really clear, but there's, there's bacteria in it. And by the way, I took this to Coastal Federation, and this has been edited by Todd Miller, and we discussed it, and he went through and he added and put some changes in there, which you're seeing right now, so.
They say, oh, easy straight, put in a block system. They say the time that sewage water goes in that block system and runs its course, you can drink it. Same thing with gravel system, it purifies it as it works through the system. The sand, the mound systems, we do, you familiar with atmospastic, does the purification of the water. So you don't have raw sewage running into the tributaries and all that unless you have a malfunctioning system.
Exactly.
And like I said the last maiden, our biggest problem is upstream coming here. If the environmental does their part, which they do, because I deal with them every day, you won't have problems, but then if somebody wants to do a mother-in-law suite and their system cannot handle it, it's over with, they can't have it.
Right.
Because, you know, most of these houses are set up for three bedrooms, they had a mother-in-law suite that's in the fourth bedroom, and the system will not accommodate the fourth bedroom.
That's correct.
And then you have some people that have the system that can, so why take the right from them to have a mother-in-law and suite or anything like that? I think it's quite fair.
So, Ted, so you're not in favor of sending the letter forward, then?
I don't think, I don't see a point in letting what we got in place do its thing. Let environmental, they're gonna control it.
Well, I realize they're the controlling...
They, they gonna tell you what you're gonna do and what you ain't gonna do, and that's the first step.
Yeah, and I, and my feeling is that's not good enough, because there's fecal coliform in both bodies of water, Pettiford Creek, and now some people will say that, well, maybe it comes from animals, you know, that, but I, I don't buy that.
I've talked to the soil engineer, and he's told me like the panel system, the lock system, the anaerobic drip on my mound system that we put in over there on the lots I got from you over at Star Heel, five blocks, the time it does its thing, it's purifying the sewage water like a sewer plant would, it just ain't running sewage in the ground.
Oh, yeah, that tertiary treatment plant that for some sins in a past life I am controlling partner in, our, our operator, Dan Forton, held up a bottle and said, I could drink this, and I said, please don't, because it is pure, it is pure by the time it...
It just ain't running sewage water in the ground, the ground's doing its job.
Right.
Yeah, but the ground, the places we're talking down here, you're talking groundwater is about 12 inches below the surface, and that's about at the bottom of, if it were a gravel system, about of the gravel pit, the gravel system that you put in for...
That's why you have trench bottoms on your permit.
Twelve inch, 18 inch, whatever.
And that, they take into account the depth of the trench bottoms, how much to good soil you got under, and then your soil does its thing.
Alex, comment?
So, Julie, the update that you sent out today earlier, kind of from the League of Municipalities, right, saying that, hey, they're taking a good look at this because this, the angle they're looking at is more of the fact that this takes away the nuance, the ability for the town or the local governments to actually say, there are those one-offs where one size isn't gonna fit all, which this bill, as it's written, seems to just attempt to kind of cast that net, right, allow people to use their garages and other structures for, you know, housing, but they seem to be opposed to that, right? But is that, is that what I'm looking at, is that the sentiment of the actual municipalities, or is that just the league kind of putting out that opinion?
Well, I think the league is looking at, local governments have authority to zone, and this is the state legislature telling local governments how they would do this, and I think that that's what the league is focusing on.
I think that's the angle that I kind of look at, and I say to myself, this, this letter, this draft that we have in front of us, that, that kind of covers the whole thing with the wastewater, wastewater is one angle, right? There's a couple of other ways that you could slice and dice this. Along those lines, I would say, you know, Ted, I think you're, you're right in your assessment that it's like, well, it seems like they've got some of that on that, right? Like, they've got some of that stuff covered already, why would we recommend to the BOC to put forward something like this? The other side of it that I see is also, it's like, well, why wouldn't the Board of Commissioners lobby for something that would benefit? for something that would benefit town people? So where I land on it kind of right now is, is that, you know, before, before today, I would have, I would have said, yes, let's go forward with this. That update that's come out, I think there's a couple of ways we can go about this, right? There's, we can just table it for now and say, hey, let's see where we're at come the next meeting. Or we can just say, you know what, strike while the iron's hot kind of deal. There's no reason to hold on this letter. Let's push it forward. And along with the league's opinion, let's just get that sentiment going forward. Because like I said, I think wastewater is one angle, but I would not be surprised if, you know, Frank, town staff, whoever, get their hands on this thing and craft it a little bit more to cover all of those kind of other angles that we're talking about. Because, yeah, the one thing that also comes to mind here is like, hey, you know, the ability to actually say what you can and can't do with certain structures and within reason, right? There are going to be those one-offs, and I've seen them in my experience where sometimes you say to yourself, that doesn't really fit, you know, the puzzle there. I don't know that, you know, those many people should be in, in that structure or that way, that design. There are come other codes and things in play. And I just worry that we're missing that, if that makes sense. I know that that's, there's a lot to unpack there, but then again, there's a lot to unpack here, so.
I think I missed the last part.
I'm sorry.
I think I missed the last part, I'm sorry. Of what you were saying.
I, I guess just to kind of just sum up everything is that before that update came out today, I, I would have, especially after reading something like that, I would have said, yeah, let's, let's go forward with it. I think this is good. But there are other angles here, there are other factors. And I think we still need to kind of see where this is going to go, right? So I'm, I'm just saying, kind of along the lines like we did with some of the structures, like the mailbox and stuff, we kind of just need to keep it on the radar, but not necessarily make a one-way yea or nay today.
I agree with that. We don't need to jump.
I, I mentioned in there a couple of times stormwater. That's also an issue because some of these won't be garage apartments where the garage is already implanted. In fact, it's a detached garage. It's, you totally do it, okay? But detached buildings would add to the surface runoff portion regarding. So you got stormwater and.
Again, you got to do the regenerative. Are they governed that? You can't put some other structure on a piece of property for your impervious area.
Right, right. The ones down here, it's 25% for, within 575 of the tributaries and the sound.
I think that's the struggle that I have is that there's, there's a gray area, right? There's a, there's a gray area in, in, in there, right? Where it's like, this hasn't been done here. This kind of stuff, you mean, you heard Frank said it, this is kind of, this, this doesn't get pushed through in North Carolina. The fact that this is coming up right now, I think even at the highest levels, they're still trying to understand how to deal with it, right? And I think that that's the concern that I kind of have. It's like, where do the challenges come into play, right? Because, and I know this gets into a, you know, more complex conversation, but I think we do have a little bit of a responsibility to look at it and say, you know, somebody now says, oh, well, the state says I could do this. And then what's the challenge, right? Like, are we going to go in a back and forth where all of a sudden everybody starts popping up these things and then it starts creating an apparent problem? And we didn't, we had the opportunity to say something about it or do something about it, and we didn't? That's kind of where I'm going with it?
If I could add.
Please.
The legislature will not be back in session until April.
It's through one house, okay?
It's in committee in the Senate.
Yeah.
You know, but things can stay in committee for a long time.
But they could not, right?
They took no action.
Okay.
It, it went into committee and it didn't, there, there was nothing. It was silence. And I don't have the exact dates that it went in. But also, it will be a short session. And, and typically, I think budget bills are the only thing that's looked at in the short session. And Frank wasn't even sure, you know, just to catch a little conversation, how, how fast this would be considered, if at all. So I just want you to be aware.
No, thank you for that. Forgive me if it seems like I'm toeing a lot, but I like to look at things objectively, right? Like, I mean, I, I know a lot of us do here. So, I mean, it just, I'm kind of just weighing both sides of this and saying, where do we land? You know, so it's like, I don't want to seem wishy-washy, but I, I think that we do need to look at this through an objective lens and kind of say, okay. And at the end of the day, what's, what's the value here for the community, right? So.
Yeah. We might have total unanimous approval or something like that. It's totally disregarded. And that's probably the likelihood, okay?
But don't you feel better having read this update?
I didn't get that. It came out today.
Yeah, it came out today.
But today?
Yeah, I got it.
I got it.
Oh, and I think I made copies.
I, I didn't, I didn't look today.
Oh, yeah, I did make copies.
But don't you feel better having read this?
I haven't read it because I didn't get it.
Yeah, it's, it's basically saying in a nutshell like.
Before I even read it, you know, just judging from what we said, maybe let's, we could put this on the table, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and then maybe bring it up again when the rest of our people are here.
Sure, sure.
And also, let me ask you, do you think if you could take this to Frank and say, if you were going to say this, how would you say it? And have him take a, take a look at that and see what he, how he would word it. You know, would he change it, you know?
I think that's reasonable.
Pardon?
I think that's reasonable.
So you want to keep this on the agenda for the next meeting that I heard and?
Yes, yes. So we'll table it till the next meeting and have, let Frank get the opportunity to.
You know what I was going to say about this one? And, and tell me if I'm wrong here, right? But it just feels like this one, this one especially, it's like, there's no movement, there's no movement. All of a sudden, there's like a ton of movement. We've got an update and all this other stuff. And that's the thing that kind of, again, causes me to like, all right, it's, go ahead.
Well, I could.
Yeah.
The report came out yesterday. So that's, that's the League of Municipalities Session Report.
Right.
And, and it covers all sorts of items. I think the report's like 20 pages long.
But you're on the ball.
And we appreciate that. But what that tells me, having dealt with stakeholders up there in that part of the state my prior life, there's a lot of back channel conversation going on about this, a ton.
I had, I have not seen this, okay? And I'm not going to read it in the meeting, but I'm going to read it as I go home.
Yeah, and, and that's the thing that I'm just like, you know, I feel like at any moment, yeah, they're out until April.
You should feel better. You should read it. You should feel better about tabling it or tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I guess, and I, I don't like to talk a lot at these meetings, your meeting, but I was very impressed with the, you know, the scoop of issues that the people, the league found with this.
Yeah.
And it's just not a single pointed issue.
There's really not.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different angles here. And that's what I was saying, that nuance, that kind of, that one-off situation, the ability to kind of like, now you're saying to the town blanket it, right? Or the, or the locality blanket, you have to do this this way. And it's like, whoa, hold on a minute, you know, so that's.
And I don't know how much weight the league carries, but I think when you have lots of towns.
Yes.
Weighing in.
Yes.
I think it carries weight, yeah.
I do.
Well, I'm going to read this thing and maybe I would change the approach. I, I know that it, and I didn't even mention this, I meant the effects of it. But it treads on the fact that in North Carolina, zoning has been the issue, has been the, the, on the plight of the local municipalities. You know, they, they control zoning.
And, and Mike, it may just be as simple as when we return for the next session, we say, hey, we recommend to the Board of Commissioners that you align to the league's recommendation. Why, why reinvent the, you know, the wheel, right? I mean, it just may be that simple. Hey, this is a good idea.
Well, the, you know, it, it's interesting. I grew up right on the coast in New England. And all those houses, well, I, I was so shocked when I came down here and I could see waterfront from my boat that hadn't been developed. Well, everything up there had been developed about 1900, okay? And they were putting in systems that aren't advanced as what we have today. And it was an issue in the, the local tributaries and, and the beaches and so forth. So that's where I came from. And I, I saw this and I said, jeez, we've controlled this thing for, since 1973. We've managed this. I had to stand up in court to defend this thing for the people who wanted to put an apartment in a detached garage. And I was supported by the courts in that, that thing, so.
Well, there, there are restrictive covenants that deal with this in Cape Carteret.
Yes.
And the zoning, for better or worse, was modeled after the restrictive covenants had been in place for years.
Yeah.
To.
Well, the, yeah, but the covenants aren't everywhere.
They're not everywhere, but they're in the majority of the subdivisions. Star Hill, Cape Carteret, even Bay Shore.
Yes.
And, and the more recent subdivisions have more stringent covenants.
Yeah.
And there are ways for even a single property owner to defend the covenants, particularly if it's next door.
Yeah.
But, but I, I don't think it would be out of place for us to wait until December.
No, I, I'm fine with that. That's, I think that's a, that's a good move. We'll wait till December, we'll bring it up again, we'll have all of our people here. We'll have Frank having had an opportunity to, to weigh in on it, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, we could just keep it just like it is, or we could make it a discussion item for December discussion item.
Probably a discussion item.
So I guess we need a, a motion to have it as a discussion item in a second.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Hold a favor? We're good, unanimous. Okay. And we have moved the meeting from the 19th to the 12th.
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. I will, I think we ran out of people. You were the last one on, and Ted, I'm not going to do it to you. I'll do the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Right, the brief.
I'll, I'll do the Board of Commissioners meeting in, in December.
Okay.
And we'll go from there. Any other staff comments?
Well, wait, wait, are, are, were we not going to address A through F tonight?
Well, we could say which ones we want to put on the agenda. The, the only, the only reason, the letter to the General Assembly on a satisfactory draw, the only reason I put that out is I felt an urgency because it had been through one house already, okay? And I didn't know what she shared with me that we've got time.
Yep. That's been moved to discussion.
So that's moved to discussion. I think all of these other, other items need to be on a future agenda.
Well, could I make one request, please? On E, I, I thought these were going to be not just scheduled, but possibly discussed tonight. And I have a, an interest in the sign ordinance amendment. If I could go into that with the board tonight. And the reason I want to go into it is so that this board, should it choose to make a recommendation, could do it prior to the December 11th meeting of the town board.
So you have a specific issue on the sign ordinance that you feel, is, is there like, like a?
Two minutes.
No, I, I meant, you can have all the minutes you want, okay? What I meant was, is it a, a single issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, years ago, the town expressed an interest in Lot 29 at the point of Taylor Notion 58 to buy it. And they could have bought it for $75,000. And they chose not to buy it. They chose to buy the kayak launch area up in Pelletier, which is mud at low tide because there was a grant involved, but we had to put money into it anyway, anyway. So again, there's interest in purchasing Lot 29 at the point. Well, it's got two billboards on it. And it's got a directional sign that says Star Hill Public Welcome at the, at the tip. Well, at first, the owners of the lot with the billboard said, no, we don't want to sell it because we want to keep the billboards. And Frank said, well, you can keep the billboards and you can move them if you need to. And then it was discovered that we can't move them because the sign ordinance specifically forbids moving the billboards, even though the owners are going to retain an easement in order to move the signs back if the state of North Carolina ever builds a roundabout up there. And that's what we hear they're planning to do. Don't know, it may never happen. But if, if that specific item in the sign ordinance could be changed to allow those billboards to be moved back in the event that the state of North Carolina took that land where there's now city.
Why wouldn't it be a variance thing?
Board of adjustment.
No, no, because it's something, no, they don't, the owners don't want that. I'm of the real estate broker representing the owners.
If I could.
Yeah.
So Frank and I have been working on a revi- revision of the current sign ordinance.
Right.
And a provision such as what you're speaking of could be placed into that.
With one word, it, one word change, and I didn't bring that with me. I meant to, but I didn't. It, it prevents the, the moving back of the billboards. If the sign ordinance were to allow in the event of condemnation or, or a hurricane knocking them down or something like that.
So if I'm understanding it correctly, there's something in the ordinance right now that prevents a sign from being moved?
A billboard.
A billboard.
Because billboards are non-conforming uses. All the billboards in town are non-conforming uses.
So the intention being that for a commercial purpose, they couldn't just say, oh, we want to hear now, we want to hear now, we want to. Okay, I see.
Right.
Jackson, this is not too simple for me. I need to, I need to understand it better. I need to go look in.
Okay, just go and look.
And so we, we would have to table this to another time. I, I'm just not comfortable even.
I think, I, I mean, I don't.
Well, it could be changed after the fact, but there's always the danger that it never would be.
I, I think if Frank and Julie are working on it, then, like, right, I mean.
Well.
Or do you want something more formal? Sorry, Mike, sorry. You, are you, are you proposing something to tie in like further?
We, I have a contract with the owners to propose that the town buys the lot, okay? And I've worked on it for four years now. And the town made an offer to purchase, no earnest money, no due diligence, which they risked nothing. And then lately, the town attorney asked for an extension so that he could complete the title search so that this could be sold and closed at the end of November. Well, I wouldn't mind giving him more time if he wants it to do due diligence in his title search. But what concerns me is if the owners sell it and the deal is closed and the sign ordinance is never changed and the non, and the non-conforming billboards are lost forever.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying. But what I'm saying is I, I need to go up and look at this thing and I need to understand it before I'm comfortable doing anything on it.
I understand. But this was the last meeting before the, the December meeting. But anyway, it's okay. It's all right. I just have to trust that it'll, it'll be done, hopefully.
Yeah. And, and basically, the issue is buying the land and being able to keep the signs that are there as, essentially as is.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And if necessary, moving them back, not making them bigger, not doing anything, just moving them back if the state puts a roundabout.
Boy, that sure sounds like a variance to me, but I, let me look into it. That, that's where I'm at on that.
Okay.
I don't understand.
Yeah.
I, I've seen the signs, I know exactly what you're talking about. The one that says where the golf course is, and I, I just never thought of it in terms of, and I know you've mentioned this to me years ago. Yeah, but I, it never was on any agenda or anything on it. I never really looked at it.
Well, we, we've never, we've never had any real assurance. until in the November meeting, the Town Board voted to fund the purchase price.
Yeah.
That's the only assurance we've ever had, because the town risked nothing. They didn't give us earnest money, they didn't give us due diligence money, nothing. Just said, yeah, we'd like to buy it if the title search comes out the way we want it. Anyway, that's okay. That's all right.
Well, I think what you're talking about, I'm just wondering, Julie, like, I, I sent also a message regarding kind of the sign luminescence, I guess we'll call it, for lack of a better term, right? And how bright some of these are.
These aren't illumined.
No, no, I know, not yours. But I, I'm, I'm looking at tackling the, the larger things. So where I'm going, where I'm going with it is timeline wise, do you think, do you think we'll have something to talk about at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
My, my focus is on trying to provide good definitions of what signs.
Right.
Are, so that, you know, somebody that comes in to do any development can understand what's expected of them.
Yeah.
And, and also so that everybody here has a common language. That's a directional sign. That's a wall sign.
That's advertising, yeah.
You know?
And then you have the Baptist Church with its new digital sign. So.
Well, we addressed digital signs, oh, ten years ago, I guess, when they first started coming out. And I hadn't read the ordinance in years, but there's a lot in there about, you know, those can be literally, this is the meeting date, or something showing a baseball game on them. Those, you know, that's how stuff is advanced. And it's been a long time since I looked at that, but. So this, this item, do you want to place that on the agenda for discussion by the whole board, or?
Well, yes, eventually, but at such time as it suits the board to discuss the sign ordinance.
So I was just.
Yeah, I thought, I thought something, somebody from, from the meeting was trying to speak.
Um, it's planned to be on the agenda for the twelfth of December. And that, that would be my town staff comment.
Okay.
That's, that's fine.
And, and I think with anything of that nature, it's gonna require a lot of thought, a lot of discussion.
Certainly, yes.
There'll be some wording revision, because it's, it's a big document. And we're attempting to cover everything, all I's, T's dotted cross before we bring it in.
That's a lot of work.
That is not easy, especially on that sign ordinance.
Lot of work.
Okay, so let's, let's briefly what we've got for December. It's on the twelfth. We've got a discussion on, with the whole board of, the house numbering's done. We don't need to have that, the, the mailboxes and also the accessory structures, housing structures and signs.
And the letter.
Yep, that, that letter.
So are we, are we putting off commercial vehicle parking, yard replacement and park at public library? Are we just?
Well, I, I think those three items is gonna pretty much consume the meeting. And I would say that these other items would go January and February.
That's a fair assessment.
I wondered. And what did we say was gonna be G after Park at Public Library? What, what's that one? That we added to this list of discussion things?
When?
Well, what did we put after Park at Public Library in our discussion tonight?
I didn't put.
No, I don't, I don't think any other item was added. I think it was just that.
We moved up the letter to the General Assembly to a discussion item.
Right.
At this meeting.
Yes.
But I had, I started to write something under Park at Public Library, but, I don't know, sorry.
That's all right.
Sorry.
Okay. That's it. Is anything else? Any additional comments?
Well, I have gifts for all. I've ordered these from.
Thank you.
The, the department, yeah, who put them out. And I think it's a really nice thing. I have a couple of extras for the planning board members who weren't. Of course, yeah, of course, for the planning board members who aren't here. But this is a nice book about plant this instead, sorry, sorry. Yeah, this, these things that I wouldn't have really thought of about the plants and so forth. Instead of, you know, avoid these shrubs like kudzu and everybody knows kudzu. Anyway, I just.
Well, thank you, Pax.
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay.
And I'm gonna give them to the Board of Commissioners. And do you want to hear anything about the Park at Public Library issue to just consider it, or what a way?
Um, is there any urgency to do it?
Nice or, nice or not a bit?
Let's, well, let's kind of put, these items that we have are gonna take some time. It's gonna work us over. I'd rather not put anything on and give them their, their due diligence or we can get them on in January or February.
Okay.
I do have two more procedural points for us. The first, this seating arrangement, kind of the way it is right now for us, I recall it being adopted more for like when planning board was doing workshops way back when. I'd like to take a look at, if all of you agree, something that's a bit more welcoming to the, to the public that walks in here and kind of just being a little bit more open. This is nice for us to engage, right? But I, there's something about me just having my back to the door and kind of having it look that way that I just think, you know, it's, it's, we were facing maybe that way or some different kind of way, I think it would be better for just.
So if we took just two of these and set them side by side, long way this way, we'd all be facing.
Yeah, I think some, just something different.
Then, I'm not, I'm against going up there because we have stuff that we.
Just an idea.
I try to keep them less formal, the planning board meeting, so we can throw papers around, we can look at stuff. And I tried it up there way back when. It just, it was like I was totally detached from the board. But I understand what you mean. We took these two tables and sent them this way, so we were all sitting facing here.
Yeah, just something a little bit more engaging. And the, the second thing that I just was curious to get everybody's input on, and I think, I think it's come up in here and there in other meetings we've had, is public comment. So, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, me thinking through this, right? It's like, the public sees the agenda, right? They say, oh, okay, I've got three minutes to comment on it. But then, as we go talking through things, right? Especially as we move forward, I'm also forward thinking some of the other things we're going to be tackling. I think it's critical to get input from the public as we go along, especially if we're gonna be making recommendations on some of the things. You know, Town Center comes to mind, right? So I think it's important that we kind of say, hey, this thing about opening a meeting with public comment, I think the public should be able to engage throughout.
I agree with you. And in fact, with the, sitting there, we can ask that at the beginning of the meetings, that anybody, when we get to the item that they're interested in, if you want to comment during the discussion, just raise your hand, wait to be recognized.
If I could, some planning boards have, I'm just gonna call them Robert's Rules of Order.
Yeah, sure.
And, and I can look and see what I can find and, and, you know, you, you can review some options. But it would address things like when can, yeah, and how do we engage the public?
I looked at Robert's Rules of Order to conduct these meetings, and it's way more rich than I'm comfortable with.
Well, I think they're called like planning meeting bylaws. And I just couldn't think of the exact term. I'm not suggesting Robert's Rules of Order. But there were bylaws that, that, you know, you publish them to everybody, so everybody has those things.
Yeah.
And I, and I can see the intention behind that, because look, obviously, we know in the past, there have been contentious topics and people come in here and they express their opinions, good, bad, or indifferent, right? I don't think we should be afraid of that at all, right? We should, we need to welcome it. But to your point, Julie, we also have to be able to, you know, move forward with the town's business, right? So.
The, and the town attorney, what I have to discuss with him, he says the chair of this board has a lot of latitude on how he wants to conduct the meeting. The fact is that we just have to have the meetings and, and make a recommendation. So I, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with turning these tables sideways and facing the thing and just announcing that if you want to comment, just raise your hand and wait to be recognized, and we will recognize them to speak on the particular subject. Because it's not having heard the discussion in here and having to make your comments beforehand, sometimes that doesn't.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, right. It seems a little backwards sometimes.
Well, the thing is, there was a lot of grumbling when Emerald Isle recently moved its public comments to the end of the meeting.
Oh, I can imagine.
Because people wanted to make their comments and then leave. Really? So you're gonna get it both ways.
Okay.
But.
This is like a happy medium, man.
Yes.
We, we used to, yeah, we used to have two commissioners meetings a month. And the first one was very informal, a lot of give and take, which I really appreciate.
I, I did too.
And then they cut that one out and went strictly to keep your mouth shut out in the audience and let us do our business. And that's how it is now, except for the three-minute public comment.
It should never be like that, you know? I, I recall being on the other side, and I know we all have, and, you know, we all live here.
I think that's a good suggestion, and we will do that. We tried to do that by, some people, we've had people here at some of the meetings that wanted to speak, and you could tell that they wanted to speak, and we allowed them to speak. And I, I think that's a good practice. It's, I'm all for that.
Great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Meeting to, motion to adjourn?
Let move.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, bless your heart.